Bienvenidos. Gracias por asistir al Consejo de Mesa de Gobierno Responsable, la reunión de la ciudadanía de la ciudad.
¡Sí!
Sí, es verdad. Hemos trabajado muy duro para poner todo esto en pie. Alguien que sea disruptivo será solicitado a dejar. Ahora, sigamos con este maravilloso programa. Mi nombre es Alex Reich y vivo en Mesa Verde, y seré el maestro de ceremonias de esta noche. También me parece candidato en el distrito 2 de Mesa Water. Gracias. Gracias. También están presentes candidatos al consejo municipal Sandy Guinness, Jay Humphrey, y John Stevens. Y estarán disponibles para responder a cualquier pregunta. Representantes de Costa Mesa First también están disponibles para información sobre la medida Y y de la Alianza de Preservación Fairview sobre la medida AA. El primer orador que quisiera presentar es Robin Lefler. Robin es presidente de Costa Mesa for Responsible Government y patrocinador de la evento de esta noche. Ella liderará el saludo de la bandera.
Buenas noches. Por favor, unirme en saludar la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América. Le plego la lealtad a la bandera, a los Estados Unidos de América, y a la República por la que se sostiene: una nación bajo Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos.
Usted puede no sentarse.
Gracias, Carl. Estoy tan grata de que vivamos en un país que nos permite reunirse, tener libertad de expresión, y presentar nuestras opiniones en público sin miedo a la retaliación del gobierno. Así que gracias a todos por unirnos esta noche para disfrutar de esas libertades. La reunión de la ciudadanía de la ciudad fue completamente planeada y organizada por los voluntarios de Costa Mesa for Responsible Government. CM4RG es una organización de base, no partidaria, y nuestra misión es incentivar y promover altos niveles de abertura, responsabilidad, integridad, y responsabilidad en nuestro gobierno municipal. Somos cientos de vecinos y residentes de Costa Mesa, de todos los ámbitos políticos, desde la afiliación de partidos y opiniones sobre varios temas se preocupan. Somos escrupulosamente no partidarias sobre eventos nacionales, eventos estatales, y elecciones nacionales. Tenemos gente en la organización de cada partido que puedas imaginar. Teníamos a un tipo que pertenecía al Partido de "Nosotros Amigos Mujeres", pero se mudó de ciudad. No creo que haya entendido eso de la manera que algunos lo entendieron. En cualquier caso, promovemos cosas a nivel local, así que en ese aspecto tomamos lados cuando pensamos que es muy importante y cuando podemos lograr que cientos de personas que forman esta organización estén de acuerdo en muy pocos temas que afectan nuestra calidad de vida en Costa Mesa. Así que, por lo tanto, esta reunión de la ciudad. Y si usted quiere unirse a CM4RG, hay una mesa de inscripción en la parte de atrás de la habitación. Puede entrar en nuestra lista de correo electrónico y obtener información de nosotros tres veces al mes, invitaciones para unirse a eventos en los que estamos involucrados. Antaña, la señora del consejo, Wendy Lees, estará en la mesa de atrás. Y tenemos algunos bolsillos de regalos divertidos para entregar. Así que si no consiguió un boleto, vaya allá y alcance tantos como te dan. Y también tenemos... Hey, Carl es literalista, seguro. Y inmediatamente después del programa tendremos los dibujos. Así que buena suerte con eso. Voy a devolverlo a Alex Reich, ¿verdad? Correcto? Quien también está corriendo por el asiento en el distrito de Mesa Water, distrito 2, que es la zona de Mesa Verde y parte del área que cruza Estancia y la escuela secundaria y la escuela Wilson, y un poco de la parte que está debajo de Estancia, eso es distrito 2. Así que gracias, Alex.
El papel del gobierno: el cuidado de la vida humana y la felicidad, y no su destrucción, es el primer y único objeto de buen gobierno. Thomas Jefferson. Así que para la agenda de esta noche, primero vamos a obtener una actualización sobre el control vectorial. Vamos a hablar sobre el departamento de la policía de Costa Mesa Fire, estado y problemas. Casa de vivienda sobria, vamos a ver nuestra situación ahora. El departamento de la policía, estado y problemas, y preguntas del público. Esos preguntas, por cierto, están en su bolsillo de regalos. Son tarjetas de index. Por favor, cuídaslas, las entregues a los invitados que estarán caminando, y nos acercaremos a ellos. Bien. Así que Wendy Lees es organizadora de la comunidad, y también es una de las miembros del consejo municipal de Costa Mesa. Y ella va a darnos una actualización sobre el control vectorial, y cuidado con ese cable.
Gracias, Alex. Bueno, quiero agradecerles todos por tomar tiempo de sus horarios despejados para venir a esta importante reunión de la ciudad, organizada por sus vecinos. Y la investigación que han hecho es, estoy seguro, que todos serán impresionados. Pero quiero empezar con el micro mientras ustedes llevan el macro. Y quiero agradecer a la señora del consejo Sandy Guinness por... Ella está en el control vectorial, y ha reunido con muchos residentes y vecinos para trabajar con los vecinos del control para calmar la situación en Costa Mesa que era un poco... Había muchos mosquitos por encima de los ponds. Pero estoy seguro de que todos están al tanto del virus de West Nile que se transmite por el mosquito, y también el virus Zika. Ahora, afortunadamente, eso no está en la cuenta de la ciudad de Orange todavía. Pero lo que necesita hacer es poner ese número en su teléfono celular. Y aquí está por qué. Porque la forma en que los vecinos del control de spray y van a los basamentos de caza y están trabajando los fines de semana para realmente lidiar con el problema del mosquito. Pero nosotros, como residentes, como ciudadanos, podemos vaciar cualquier tipo de agua inestable desde botellas o de pails. El otro día, llevé a mi hermano a la biblioteca de Huntington Beach, y cuando miré desde la ventana, había este gran agujero de agua que siempre está ahí. Y pensé, "No soy realmente una residente de Huntington Beach. ¿Necesito llamar?" Y pensé, bueno, llamé. Bill me llamó esta mañana y me recordó que Carlos y Todd son los representantes de Costa Mesa del vector. Así que escribe ese número, 714-971-2421. Y también puede enviar un correo electrónico de preocupación. Pero la única forma en que vamos a realmente ayudar a los vecinos del control de spray y mantener el problema bajo control es si hacemos nuestra parte y deshacernos de la agua inestable. Así que creo que somos un salvador de hermanos, e incluso si no somos una ciudad diferente, pero vemos un problema con la agua inestable, que es una forma en que podemos ayudar al ente entero a minimizar la amenaza de mosquitos. Pero ha calmedse porque están tomando un enfoque muy agresivo y proactivo para deshacerse de los mosquitos. Así que estamos bien en Costa Mesa. Si tiene alguna otra pregunta, la señora Guinness tiene varios brochures allí. Están en inglés y español sobre el virus de West Nile y lo que más se puede hacer. Así que muchas gracias, y gracias por venir.
Ahora, Ralph Taboda. Ralph es un residente de Costa Mesa y genera su familia aquí. Ha vivido en el lado estejo, pueblo inferior, y actualmente vive en Mesa Verde. Fue nombrado al comité de supervisión de pensiones cuando se formó en el invierno de 2013, y es vicepresidente. Recientemente fue nombrado miembro del comité de asesoramiento financiero, y es el presidente del comité de la retirada de bicis y de walking ability, que se formó en mayo de 2015. Mi favorito personal, Ralph.
Tengo una confesión para hacer. No conduje mi bicicleta aquí, así que... Gracias, Alex. Gracias por todos venir esta noche. Los departamentos de la policía locales son generalmente... Esto no va a funcionar. Lo tengo. Los departamentos de la policía locales son generalmente muy activos en las comunidades en las que sirven, y en muchos casos son pilares de ese comité, de esa comunidad. Están aquí para servir, y es reforzante saber que en una emergencia tienen nuestras espaldas. Ahora, yo mismo vivo a medio millón de kilómetros de la estación de la bomba de fuego Royal Palm, y realmente me da una buena sensación saber que están cerca. Nuestro departamento de la policía de Costa Mesa es muy activo. Realmente conducen tours de estación, presentan a los grupos sociales locales y escuelas, y enseñan clases de CPR, patrocinan la Academia de Fire de Ciudadanos, y conducen clases de emergencia de la comunidad. Y normalmente al tiempo de Navidad pueden ver a algunos de ellos en camisetas rojas y barbillas blancas que se mueven en las escuelas. Ahora, nuestro departamento de la policía ha undergone muchas cambios en los últimos años. Desde 2010, han tenido cinco jefes de la policía. Con esos muchos cambios, pone un gran estrés en la organización. Cada jefe puede tener un enfoque diferente, o puede querer hacer cosas un poco diferente. Las prioridades o estrategias del departamento pueden cambiar dependiendo de quién es la persona superior, y a veces los cambios pueden ser sutiles o pueden ser significativos. Ahora, no estoy seguro de cuántos de ustedes tuvieron la reunión del jueves de la noche del consejo municipal, pero... Un par de manos se levantaron. El tema del departamento de la policía surgió entre los miembros del consejo, y francamente fue bastante caliente y pesado durante un tiempo. Pero había todo tipo de números lanzados, hablando de la demora de tiempo, salarios, costos de pensiones, niveles de personal, compensación, quién paga pensiones, quién no paga pensiones, ese tipo de cosas. Así que no vamos a entrar... Vamos a hablar de eso esta noche, pero no es una pregunta de si esta es nuestra posición o qué es correcto o qué es incorrecto. Queremos presentar realmente los hechos, los datos y la información de esta noche, así que ustedes pueden realmente tomar sus propias decisiones, y espero que vayan con mucha más información que no sabían cuando vinieron. Así que veamos nuestro departamento de la policía hoy. ¿Tiene el clickeo? Gracias. Bien, CMFD, departamento de la policía de Costa Mesa. Tenemos seis estaciones de fuego. Coincidencia, tenemos seis camiones y motores. Ahora, antes de que vean a su vecino y le pregunte qué es la diferencia entre un camión y un motor, un camión lleva las escaleras, un motor lleva agua, el hilo tiene bombas en él. Esa es la diferencia principal. Así que si tienes un incendio pequeño, por ejemplo, el motor podría salir, bombear con el hilo y el agua, sacar ese incendio sin tener que conectarlo a un hidrante de fuego. Paramédicos, tenemos seis ambulancias paramédicas. Sin embargo, y hablaremos un poco más de esto más tarde, solo tres de ellos están en servicio. Nuestro personal actual hasta julio es 76. Personal presupuesto es 84, así que estamos ocho menos del presupuesto de lo que son los efectivos reales. Y cada año el gobierno elabora un presupuesto para ambos dólares y el headcount o el personal, y ese presupuesto de personal es 84 para este año. Las posiciones sin filmación son siete bomberos y un inspector de edificio. El personal adecuado para seis estaciones es 96, y hablaremos un poco más de eso también. Ahora, en mayo de 2013, hubo un plan de reorganización mayor subido al consejo municipal. El plan reconoció que el trabajo del CMFD, departamento de la policía de Costa Mesa, realmente implicaba principalmente EMS o servicios médicos de emergencia. Alrededor del 70% de las llamadas son llamadas EMS, y esto no es único a Costa Mesa. Es realmente cierto, estoy seguro, en todo el país. Quiero decir, los códigos de edificio han cambiado, los edificios están siendo construidos ahora con material suprimidor más, hay sprinklers automáticos en los edificios, así que no tenemos tantos incendios de edificio como teníamos hace 10, 20, 30 años. Las iniciativas principales de ese plan aprobado son cerrar la estación 6. Ahora, eso es norte de la carretera freeway 405 en la metro del sur del surcoast. No estoy seguro de que algunos de ustedes ni siquiera lo conozcan. Está a la izquierda de Anton y Flower, a medio millón de kilómetros del este del centro de arte. Pero está ahí. Comprar seis ambulancias de transporte paramédica. Eso son las seis ambulancias que mencioné en la primera diapositiva. Y también, al mismo tiempo, debido a la cerración de la estación 6, fue eliminar 12 posiciones.
¿Cuál fue la razón por la que...?
No voy a... Déjame pasar. Habrá Q y A más adelante. Y también parte de ese plan fue implementar un plan de 17 puntos para mejorar las eficiencias del departamento. Y algunos de esos han sido implementados y otros no. Déjame revisar mis notas aquí un segundo. Dos de los principales elementos de ese plan de 17 puntos fue implementar un sistema de previsión de vehículos de emergencia, EVP. Así que este es un caso donde, sabiendo que los tiempos de respuesta probablemente aumentarían con la cerración de la estación 6, los tiempos de respuesta, como dije, probablemente aumentarían. Así que querían implementar lo que llamaban EVP, que como el motor de fuego o el camión se aproxima a una intersección o señal, la señal sentiría eso y automáticamente cambiaría en verde. Así que obviamente eso aumentaría los tiempos de respuesta y también la seguridad porque el motor de fuego tendría una luz verde. Ahora, personalmente, me gustaría uno de esos en mi auto para que pudiera ir por Harbor Boulevard con todas las luces verdes. El otro elemento, que es un elemento importante, fue realmente agregar una cuarta ambulancia de transporte, y eso no se ha hecho. Ahora, debería decir que el sistema EVP solo ha sido instalado o solo aplicable alrededor de la plaza del sur, junto a Bristol y Anton. No se ha implementado en el resto de la ciudad. Vamos a ver algunos de los principales problemas enfrentados al departamento de la policía. Desde 2010, el presupuesto de personal ha sido reducido un 24%, sin embargo, los llamados para servicio han aumentado un 34%. Han bajado el personal, el negocio arriba. El personal está basado en cinco estaciones. Recuerde que dije que votaron para cerrar la estación 6. El personal está basado en cinco estaciones, sin embargo, seis estaciones están operando. La estación 6 nunca se cerró y continuará siendo abierta. En enero, el alcalde y el alcalde pro tem escribieron un comentario en el Daily Pilot, básicamente diciendo que querían mantener la estación 6 abierta. Así que hemos sido una ciudad de seis estaciones durante años ahora, y continuará siendo. En los últimos cinco años, en los últimos cinco años, 2011 a 2015, el gobierno ha pagado 18.2 millones de dólares en demora de tiempo. Ahora, el presupuesto para el departamento de la policía este año es 21.5, así que eso es casi un año de presupuesto que se ha pagado solo en demora de tiempo en los últimos cinco años. Ahora, esto no se habla mucho y debería, porque es realmente muy importante. El departamento de la policía tiene una semana de trabajo de 56 horas. Eso es aproximadamente 700 horas al año más que trabajan que, digamos, la semana de trabajo típica de cinco días, 40 horas. Así que eso hace... Eso es un tercio más de horas que tú y yo estamos trabajando que ellos trabajan. Ellos trabajan, diría, aproximadamente 2,800 horas al año. Ahora, encima de eso, debido a esta demora de tiempo, muchos de los bomberos tienen 1,200, 1,300, 1,500 horas de demora de tiempo encima de su salario regular, su tiempo regular. Así que es fácil tener un bombero que gaste 4,000 horas o así en el trabajo, y no hay beneficios pagados en esa demora de tiempo. El departamento de la policía ha sido forzado a mantener y trabajar con un contratacista redundante, ineficiente, y costoso para el transporte de ambulancias. Y vamos a hablar de transporte de ambulancias en otra diapositiva. Pero es un sistema muy convolucrado. Vamos a tener un gráfico aquí sobre el personal. Pueden ver el personal. Mencioné que ha bajado un 24% en los últimos cinco años. En el plazo de 2010 fue 111. Ahora, esto es el departamento total, 111, así que los tipos que están en la estación son la prevención de fuego y su gestión y administración. En el plazo de 2010, hubo una reducción del presupuesto, y hubo una reducción de 12 headcount, una reducción de 12 personal. Ahora, había un cambio de precio por eso. En ese momento, bajaron alrededor de seis bomberos y seis paramédicos en el tiempo, y los gastos de recaudación eran aproximadamente, si recuerdo correctamente, unos 1,008 millones. Así que eso es lo que el gobierno quería hacer. Querían reducir sus costos operativos anualmente para el departamento de la policía, y recaudaron aproximadamente 1,008 millones. Pero el lado opuesto fue que el fuego se aprovechó de un pequeño beneficio adicional en sus pensiones. Sus pensiones tenían lo que llamamos un 3% por año en 55, y obtuvieron un 3% por año a la edad de 50. Así que qué significa eso? Significa que podrían retirarse antes. En lugar de... Podrían retirarse antes y obtener beneficios completos. Eso costó al gobierno, como recuerdo, unos 800,000 dólares. Así que el gobierno aprovechó unos 1,000 millones de dólares de recaudación con esa reducción del headcount. Las cosas quedaron bastante livianas hasta el plazo de 2013. Eso es lo que mencioné en mayo de 2013, fue la reorganización, y ahí fue donde el acuerdo fue reducir 12 personas adicionales, y eso es principalmente debido a la cerración de la estación 6. Desde entonces, han habido algunas adiciones, principalmente en este plazo aquí, para la prevención de fuego y gestión y administración. No se han agregado personas operativas adicionales. Ahora, vale la pena notar que la última contratación del departamento de la policía fue en 2014. Se aprovecharon de seis personas. Dos de esas personas se transferieron a otras ciudades, otras organizaciones. Tres personas fueron terminadas, y una sigue trabajando para el gobierno. Así que de esas seis, una sigue trabajando. Antes de 2014, contrataron a una persona en 2011 que sigue con nosotros. Así que es bastante dramático. Es un proceso que consume tiempo y un proceso costoso contratar bomberos y policías en ese aspecto también. Así que pasamos de 1,11 en el plazo de 09, 10, a hoy, no aparece aquí, pero mencioné que 84 es el plan. 111 a 84, esa es la reducción del 24%, y nuestros efectivos reales eran 76. Callas de servicio. Alguien llama al 911, boom, allá van. El conteo en 2010 fue 9,000, digamos, 9,700, subiendo a, esencialmente, 13,000 el año pasado en 2015. Ahora, pueden ver el aumento. La barra azul es EMS, llamadas médicas, y eso es lo que está impulsando este aumento del 34%. Y por lo tanto, realmente el cambio en el fondo de las ambulancias, el enfoque adicional en servicios médicos versus el fuego. Así que hemos mirado el headcount o el personal. Lo llamo headcount, pero quiero decir personal. Y hemos mirado las llamadas de servicio. ¿Cómo se ve eso juntos? Es un poco feo. Callas de servicio. Pueden ver que van subiendo de 2010 a 2015. Así que ese es el nivel de 13,000 en llamadas de servicio, y el headcount baja. Ahora, si estás administrando la ciudad como un negocio, si eso fuera, si este fuera mi negocio, diría, jeez, mi negocio está arriba. El negocio está arriba, el negocio está bien. Tengo más clientes entrando en la puerta, más ventas. Mejor agregar algunas personas. Quiero más policías de ventas, por ejemplo. O tal vez tengo un restaurante y necesito otro chef en la cocina, o hostess en la parte del frente, o lo que sea que el caso pueda ser. Pero en lugar de agregar personas, hemos bajado personas. Me gusta este gráfico. Aquí está el desplazamiento de equipos y personal. Las estaciones a la izquierda, y el equipo en cada estación. Pueden ver que los primeros tres, Royal Palm, Baker, y Park Avenue, tienen un motor y una ambulancia. También tienen cinco miembros, o cinco bomberos allí. Ahora, no aparece, pero el desgaste en estos tres... Perdón. Sí, los tres principales son, hay tres bomberos y dos paramédicos. Necesitan los dos paramédicos porque tienen las ambulancias y dos paramédicos manejan la ambulancia. La Placentia, estación 4, a la calle Estancia High School, tiene un camión, no ambulancia, y tiene un personal de tres. Eso son dos bomberos y un paramédico. Así que el rubro es, si hay una llamada de emergencia, una llamada médica, en el lado occidental, digamos, en Canyon Drive o Pacific Avenue, que está muy cerca de los bluff, necesitan dos paramédicos para despegar en esa llamada. Así que tienen que sacar una ambulancia, típicamente, a la calle Park o Royal Palm, que añade tiempo de respuesta. Eso son varios más kilómetros de cada de esas ambulancias, así que el segundo paramédico puede llegar a esa llamada. Lo mismo con Metro, esa estación 6 de la que hablamos. Hay cuatro personas, cuatro bomberos, no paramédicos. Así que si tienen una llamada, tienen que despegar los paramédicos, principalmente desde Baker Street, que es la estación de fuego más cercana. Yo trabajaba en la fitness de 24 horas del sur del Metro, y varias veces mientras trabajaba allí llamé al 911. Y el motor venía de la estación 6, muy cerca, dentro de un millón, y despegaban las ambulancias desde Baker Street, del otro lado de la carretera. Transporte hospital. Mencioné la reorganización de mayo de 2013. En esa reorganización, mencioné que el consejo aprobó la compra de seis ambulancias. Aprobó 1,6 millones para seis ambulancias de transporte. Cuatro se iban a poner en servicio, y dos se iban a actuar como backup. Uno de esos dos era realmente como un backup en caso de alto, digamos, volumen alto, por falta de una mejor descripción. Por ejemplo, durante la feria de la ciudad de Orange, o, digamos, está llaino y está la tormenta, que no ha pasado en un tiempo, pero siempre hay más accidentes de tráfico en la lluvia. Tal vez podrían poner otra ambulancia en servicio durante la feria de la ciudad de Orange, o en el clima inclemente, o algo así. Así que ahí es donde ese quinto ambulance se jugaría, y literalmente el sexto ambulance fue backup. Digamos que tienes una ambulancia en despliegue o reparación, o lo que sea que el caso pueda ser, entonces traen a ese quinto ambulance. Ese fue el plan, cuatro en servicio y dos para backup. En abril de 2014, el gobierno recibió su primera ambulancia. En realidad, recibió su primera y segunda ambulancia en abril de 2014. Julio, un par de meses después, recibió su tercera ambulancia. Mencioné en enero de 2016. De un transporte hospital, no mucho pasó entre julio de 2014 y enero de 2016. En... Perdón. En enero, el CEO y el jefe de la policía, Dan Stefano, recomendaron al consejo municipal que el departamento de la policía comience el transporte hospital para ALS. Déjame tomar un minuto y darles un rápido... No soy médico, pero hay ALS y hay BLS. ALS es Avance Life Support. Eso es una situación más seria. Un ataque cardíaco, un estropeo, algo así, amenazante de vida. Un BLS, Basic Life Support, no es tan crítico. Te caes, te golpeas la cabeza, estás sangrando, te duele, es raro, pero no es amenazante de vida. Eso sería una situación de BLS. Así que lo que el jefe y el CEO estaban recomendando, que el departamento de la policía transportara ALS. Eso son las situaciones más severas en Costa Mesa, las ambulancias rojas que todos vemos. Hoy, como mostró el gráfico anterior, un servicio de ambulancia privada está haciendo todo nuestro transporte, no la ciudad. Ahora, esto mejoraría la eficiencia del departamento porque actualmente tienes, cuando la campana ringing y los bomberos salen, tienen el motor o el camión funcionando, tiene al capitán a bordo, tienen la ambulancia, que tiene dos paramédicos. También llaman al servicio de ambulancia privada. Así que en la llamada, tienes en frente de esa casa o apartamento, o lo que sea, tienes el camión, tienes la ambulancia de Costa Mesa, y tienes la ambulancia privada. Parece redundante. Si la situación hoy, ese paciente tiene... has to go to the hospital, they go in the private ambulance. If it's BLS or ALS, they go in the private ambulance. If it's ALS, again, the more serious situation, that person has to be treated by a paramedic. The private ambulance service doesn't have paramedics, they have EMTs, emergency medical technicians. So right now, the patient goes in the back of the, 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 paramedic will jump in the back of the private ambulance with one of the EMTs, and they'll go to the hospital. Following them is the paramedic ambulance, empty, because they have to go pick up the paramedic that's being taken to the hospital with the patient, and caring for the patient. When the patient gets to the hospital, they roll them in, it's the paramedic that hands off that patient to the doctor or the nurse at the hospital. It's not the EMTs, it's the paramedic. And meanwhile, the ambulance is there with the other paramedic cooling his heels, waiting for his partner to finish up at the hospital and jump back in the ambulance so they can go back to the station. Now, what I say increases revenues, this would increase about four million, up to four million dollars. That doesn't say that's going to be four million dollars. But the fact is, today, the private ambulance service bills your insurance company for that hospital transport. That money could be going to the city, and the city has all kinds of avenues or different options as to how to bill. They don't have to bill you as a city resident, as a taxpayer in the city. You don't necessarily have to get billed. There's all kinds of way of peeling this onion. The three, the three-member council majority reversed the previous decision back in May of two thousand thirteen, where, where they voted to purchase the ambulances to begin with. And they went against the recommendation of the CEO and the fire chief, and they denied the Costa Mesa Fire Department for transporting, any transport, not E, BLS and/or ALS. So we're still dealing with the situation where we have the private ambulance service, we have our six purchased ambulances for a million six, which if only three are in service, and we don't get that revenue for the hospital transport. Okay, let's move on to sober living homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ralph. Thank you, Ralph. Teresa Drain moved to Costa Mesa in nineteen eighty-seven, and she's been a College Park resident for eighteen years. She volunteers for the city's military affairs system, uh, team, and First Friday Roadshow, as well as the Costa Mesa Women's Club and other local organizations. In March two thousand fifteen, she and her neighbors organized a well-attended community meeting regarding Costa Mesa's fourteen thirteen ordinance on sober living homes. The meeting was attended by council members, the Economic and Development Services Department, the Costa Mesa Police Department, and the CEO's office. The results of the question and answer session are posted on the city's website. Teresa was also part of the group of residents that successfully challenged the zoning approval for solid landings on Nineteenth Street. Let's welcome Teresa Drain.
Can you hear me? Oh, right. I don't have a lot of data up there, but, so, very important information. This affects everyone here, and I know it's a hot topic. So sober living homes. To those of you that live near one, this term piques ire. To those of you with a family member or a friend affected by addiction, this term means hope. Why are there such diverse opinions? Because there are diverse ways to operate a sober living home. So this is much more of an educational presentation. It's not an endorsement for any company or any specific practice. To better understand what is happening in our neighborhoods, we need to understand the addiction, the laws in effect, and how the Costa Mesa ordinance came about. So since I'm not an expert, for specific questions about addiction, I'm going to defer to Robert Mann. He's chairman of the Orange County Sober Living Coalition. It's a branch of the Sober Living Network, and they certify sober living homes at the state and the national level. Robert has graciously offered to be here for your questions. Thank you very much. And, by the way, have I offered you any money, or have you offered me any money for this?
Nothing at all.
Not a dime? Okay. Just getting that clear. So, why do we need them? Why are they here? It's important to know that we live in a time where drug abuse and addiction seems out of control. Some people will point to a glorification in lifestyles, music, in media, in computer games, everywhere. I know that sometime in the nineteen eighties, the medical community started to believe that pain needed to be eradicated. There was a school of thought that pain management would lead to healing. If you could reduce the pain in your body, it would give your body a chance to heal. And this was a very prevalent thought, school of thought. But this resulted in an increase in the number of prescriptions for pain. Prescriptions for Vicodin, hydrocodone, Oxycontin, oxycodone, and morphine were readily available for more and more ailments. This continued for years. More recently, there's been a change to restrict these medicines. Prescriptions have become more regulated and harder to acquire. This reduction in availability led some addicts to turn to the street counterparts of these prescriptions. Heroin use has seen a resurgence, and it is becoming more available illegally. In Orange County alone, the number of fatal drug overdoses this year has soared to four hundred. That's sixty-three percent jump from just ten years ago. Just in the past five years, drug overdoses have killed almost one thousand eight hundred people in Orange County. The CDC reports that seventy-eight lives are lost daily to drug overdose. President Obama has said, quote, "Frankly, we're still under-resourced. I don't think the public doesn't fully appreciate yet the scope of the problem." I think he's right. In fact, this week, September eighteen through twenty-four, has been declared Prescription Opioid and Heroin Awareness Week. You may have heard the PSA's running. I thoroughly encourage you to visit justice.gov and get further information. Orange County has one of the higher rates of prescription opioid deaths in the state, seventeenth out of fifty-eight counties. In fact, three hundred thousand Orange County residents, right now, suffer from a diagnosable, treatable substance use disorder, and this number will only continue to grow, year after year. It should also be understood that sober living residents are not actively participating in their past addictive lifestyles, but are participating in their recovery. They are required to maintain compliance with house rules, such as maintaining abstinence from drugs and alcohol, paying rent, paying their other fees, participating in house chores, attending house and AA meetings, and abiding by good neighbor policies. Can alcoholism and addiction be prevented? We're in a society that continually promotes alcohol and drug use. In Costa Mesa, there are over three hundred sources that dispense liquor. The National Council on Alcoholism and Drug Dependence, abbreviated NCADD, reports studies that show education, curtailing availability to people under the age of twenty-one, enforcement of laws and regulations, and access to treatment and recovery support service are the keys to prevention of addiction and relapses. The NCADD has been around for over seventy years, and their information is NCADD.org. So I want to get into a few definitions, because terms are thrown around, and we're not exactly sure what they mean or how they apply. So addiction. Addiction is considered a disease. Personally, I didn't get this. I didn't understand it, and I found it difficult to understand the definition. Intuitively, I think of a disease as a cancer, a tuberculosis, or some sort of pathology. In nineteen forty-six, the World Health Organization claimed that health is, quote, "A state of complete physical, mental, and social well-being. It's not merely the absence of a disease or infirmity." Also, understanding the definition of disease, it changes with time. Consider osteoporosis, which went from being a natural part of aging, you're just getting old, and now it's recognized as a disease. Heart disease, cancer, diabetes, it's caused by a combination of biological, behavioral, and environmental factors. Addiction is an incurable disease. There are incurable cancers that over time reoccur, but you don't stop treatment from it if one of the treatments don't work. If the disease doesn't kill you, you keep on finding the treatment until it goes into remission. Sobriety is an addiction in remission. Now, there's a process to overcoming addiction and becoming sober, and there are three phases. First phase, detoxification or detox. And this step needs to be done to rid the body of the substance of the abuse. This is a process that takes seven to ten days, and it depends on the length of the abuse, physical condition, and the drug or drugs of addiction. This process can be completed in a hospital environment and is utilized for the most severe cases. The addict is a patient in this environment. Detoxification can also be completed in a non-medical, subacute facility, which is state-licensed, and has twenty-four-hour medical observation. Next, there's outpatient treatment. This treatment phase, it lasts about thirty days. This is an inpatient phase, which includes one-on-one counseling and group therapy. It may also include medication management, as many substance abuse cases are accompanying with co-occurring disorder. I'll get to that later. This always includes living in a safe and monitored, alcohol- and drug-free structured environment, and it's known as a sober living home. Treatment and counseling services are not performed in the residence. Since homes may include restricted parking, and some patients do not have driving privileges, this is where you're going to see those vans that are transporting them and driving them around. These treatment centers are located in business areas by the code. So sober living. After successfully completing your detoxification, and while attending or after completing an outpatient treatment, one can elect to reside in a sober living home. Now, it is within this safe environment that one practices healthy habits. It's within, and they're in with, they're with individuals in a supportive atmosphere to transition them back to being able to live on their own. Sober living houses, SLHs, are alcohol- and drug-free living environments, and they're for individuals attempting to abstain from alcohol and drugs. It's imperative for an addict to be out of the environment that they were in when they were using. Lack of a stable alcohol- and drug-free living environment can be a serious obstacle to sustained abstinence. Destructive living environments can derail recovery for even the highly motivated individuals. This phase takes an average of nine months to two years, depending on the addict. It's a long time. There are slippages or relapses, and that's part of the recovery process. Once you're sober, it takes an average of seven relapses before an addict can successfully lead a clean and sober life. Now, recovering heroin addicts, they fail to obtain sobriety about eighty-six percent of the time. Those are terrible odds. This is a societal problem that can only get better with good practices, determination, and the support of the community. An addict is never cured. However, this chronic disease can be managed successfully with proper treatment. But treatment is lifelong. It's chronic, it's progressive, it's characterized by relapses, and if untreated or mistreated, it can and will result in death. There are a program called Twelve Steps, maybe you've heard them as Twelve Traditions. It refers to a program that started in nineteen thirty-nine as Alcoholics Anonymous. It's an international fellowship, and it's for people with a drinking problem. Its purpose is to help alcoholics stay sober and to help others obtain their sobriety, and it teaches a way of life. It involves a group of principals, and they're spiritual in nature, but it's been very successful. Due to its success, there's now subsequent fellowships, such as Narcotics Anonymous. Since they are, by tradition, anonymous, you don't know how many people are successful in their sobriety. As of two thousand ten, approximately one in every ten Americans over the age of twelve are addicted to alcohol or drugs. Most can benefit from some sort, form of treatment, yet only eleven percent do. So it's important to know, you do not know the success stories. That's what you, you don't see. The only side that you see are the stereotypes of those who do not seek treatment or have not returned to treatment. Now, it gets even more complicated with co-oc- co-occurring disorders or dual diagnosis. This is involving a combination of alcohol and drug use, and each addiction has its own unique symptoms. Add in mental health issues, just gets worse. Each disorder affects each other and has a unique interaction. Substance abuse is common in people with mental health problems, such as depression, bipolar disorder, or anxiety. For me, that's Monday. Sober living industry. In the industry, there's the good, there's the bad, and there is ugly. Prior to the ordinance here in Costa Mesa, there were sober living homes operating in Costa Mesa. Some span back twenty-five years. These are homes that have never had any calls for service, never had code violations, or adverse situations in their neighborhoods. These homes have successfully treated residents and transitioned them on to successfully lead productive and sober lives. These good operators take pride in their properties, and they maintain a high level of maintenance in order to help their residents learn to be good neighbors. These residents are required to have a job, or be enrolled in vocational training, or they, and they also have to take the responsibility of housework as part of their transition. The good houses, they maintain rules of conduct for their residents, which include courtesy to their neighbors. Locally, there's a coalition of sober living operators. It's called the Orange County Sober Living Coalition, and it's a branch of the Sober Living Network. The network has been in place since nineteen ninety-two. Their members are required to have rules, attend meetings to share the latest information on best practices, conduct inspections of their homes, make sure the residents are in a safe and productive environment. Members that are in good standing meet all the qualifications of a good provider, and after passing a home inspection, become certified as sober living homes. I want to impress on you, this network has twenty-four years of treating addiction in Orange County. They did not just pop up overnight. I believe that there are many unlicensed operations that do not meet the qualifications of a good provider. They do not have a set of house rules for being a good neighbor. These are the sober living homes that, instead of helping a resident that relapses, they put their belongings into a bag and put them on the curb. These are the organizations that are negatively impacting our neighborhoods. So, now, what is the difference between the residents of sober living homes and family residents? Now, this is where our ordinance gets a little controversial. Some of you feel that if you're leasing a space, it constitutes a business. However, if your family rents out one of the rooms in their homes, there's little difference. To say one is a business, and it needs to be licensed, and the other is not, that's discriminatory. This is where the ordinance can be deemed unfair and unconstitutional. How about if you're leasing out a room to an out-of-state student and provide meals for the student? What about families that host a student and receive monies for doing so? Is that a group home environment that needs to be regulated? The city of Costa Mesa has been inundated with a lion's share of these homes in Orange County. In response, the city, the city created and appointed citizens to a Preserve Our Neighborhood Task Force, and they looked into ways to lessen the negative impacts of group homes on residential communities. This task force recommendations led to the Costa Mesa ordinance. However, there are key discrepancies with the letter of the adopted ordinance and with state and national laws. Addiction is a disease, and there are laws and regulations pertaining to substance abuse and mental health services. It is a protected class under the Americans with Disabilities Act, the California ADA, the Affordable Care Act, the Mental Health Parity and Addiction Equity Act, fair housing laws, and many more. Our task is to work with these regulations and laws. I'd like to get into the connection between alcohol, drugs, and crime. According to the NCADD, alcohol and drugs are implicated in an estimated eighty percent of offenses leading to incarceration in the United States, such as domestic violence, driving while intoxicated, property offenses, drug offense, and other public order offenses. Our nation's prison population has exploded beyond capacity, and most inmates are in prison because of substance abuse. Eighty percent of offenders abuse drugs or alcohol. Nearly fifty percent of jail and prison inmates are clinically addicted. Approximately sixty percent of individuals arrested for crimes test positive for illegal drugs at arrest. The relationship between drugs and crime is complex. Which came first? Is the drug use leading people to criminal activity, or are those using drugs already predisposed? predisposed to criminal activity? At the most intense levels of drug use, drugs and crime are directly and highly correlated. Serious drug use can amplify and perpetuate pre-existing criminal activity. Those with drug use dependency are more likely to be arrested for crimes such as burglary, shop theft, robbery, handling stolen goods. These crimes are related to quote-unquote "feeding the habit." So, there are close links between drug use and people involved in the sex trade. There's evidence that drug use is both a predetermining factor in sexual exploitation and a means of those coping with it. Now, regarding juvenile crime, four out of every five children and teen arrestees in the state juvenile system are under the influence while committing their crime. Alcohol and drug abuse is associated with violence on college campuses, associated in domestic violence cases, and with child abuse cases. Approximately 95% of inmates return to drug and alcohol use after release from prison. 60 to 80% commit a new crime after release from prison. What can be done? Investing in the solution and not the problem. The solution is treatment and recovery. Treatment offers the best alternative for interrupting the criminal justice cycle for offenders. Research has shown that treatment works, and people who obtain treatment can maintain abstinence. As substance abuse declines, so does criminal behavior. So, in closing, I want to say, we cannot fight all sober living housing, because we will lose in the courts as well as fail to be compassionate. We can move forward with this knowledge and take the opportunity to find the solution that best handles recovery and support these best practices. We need to make sure that our representatives are not electioneering in enacting ordinances willy-nilly, and they fail to comply with state and national regulations. That is not responsible government. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Mary Spadoni has been a Costa Mesa resident for 44 years and has been very involved in city issues. Mary is a retired law enforcement officer, having been the first policewoman in patrol in Southern California. She did this while serving with your police department. She also was a criminal investigator with the Orange County District Attorney's Office for 20 years and is still a current member of AOCDS. Mary Spadoni.
Thank you. It's good to see a bunch of familiar faces and a bunch of new faces. You all know I have a passion for law enforcement, not only because I was in the profession for 25 years, but because our city is at a critical juncture of what's happening with our police department. But before we get in that, I want to take just one moment to tell you. I'm going to tell you where we've been, where we are, and where we want to be. But before I do that, I want to give you a heads up. When you get your pamphlet, read carefully every word of Prop 57. Prop 57 is coming down the pike. If we thought we had problems with 47, 57 is going to give us a bigger nightmare. It has 58 law enforcement and DA's saying no. It's a proposed early release for felons that have murders, rapes, child molestation, human trafficking. So, while we're fighting human trafficking, we have another law on the ballot that's going to give them shorter, shorter sentences. So, please, when you go over your ballot, make sure 57 is one that you look at very, very carefully. Don't let them fool us with it like we did with Prop 47. Thank you. And so, basically, I'm going to talk to you about where we've been, where we are, and where we wish we were. Costa Mesa has a reputation of being really one of the finest police departments in Costa Mesa. And... Button?
Go ahead. You're fine.
Okay. And, um, our officers are beyond dedicated. 2011 was a landmark year in our city. Not only did Prop 1, AB 109 come into effect, but almost simultaneously to that 109 hitting the books, and this was an enormous change. It changed over 500 laws and realigned them from felonies to misdemeanors, overloaded our jails, and put a lot, a lot more of these people out on the streets and on our local streets. But at the same time, almost simultaneously, our majority council enacted a pink slip and served over 200 of our city employees with pink slips for layoff. That's 43% of our total employees in our city, dedicated, long-term employees, and that included 15 that were going to affect the police department. So, what happened with that? You know, speaking from, who wants to keep a job and keep on working if you think that your future is in jeopardy? You have families, you have responsibility, and you want some sense of security for that family. So, what happened immediately, within a relatively short time, we lost 13 sworn police officers, all with many, many years of experience that went with them, supervisors, long-term experienced patrol people. So, what we wound up with, it was not only a shortage, but a loss of mega talent. Went to other agencies, or they just retired. Majority council at this time was Mr. Bieber, Mr. Mensinger, Mr. Righeimer, and Mr. Monahan. And what happened is, they immediately set the city into major litigation with OCEA, which represents the employees of the city of Costa Mesa. And this litigation went on for a year and a half. And what happened was, in December of 2012, about 18 months after this happened, they had to rescind the pink slips. And not only did they have to rescind the pink slips, they had to pay OCEA $371,000 for legal bills, plus the city of Costa Mesa spent over $1 million. And the end shot was legally, they could not do the pink slips. But what it set in motion was our safety as residents, the security of our staffing. Right now, today, I believe there are 73 openings citywide that have not been filled. And we know, police department-wise, many of those are from the police department. Our reputation of being a city that has filed pink slips against their law enforcement is, is unheard of. As far as New York, there were articles in the newspaper, The New Yorker magazine did a large profile on our city and what happened, how it drove, and how we wound up where we were with these pink slips. In 2010, if you get a chance to look at this banner up close, you need to look at it carefully. In 2010, you'll see, we were fully staffed. We had 12 motors, we had two canines, we had Abel, we had plenty of officers and boots on the ground. Then came the pink slips of 2011. So, if you look at the 2014, you're going to see that our 12 motors went down to two. We lost all canines, we lost Abel, and you see the amount of officers that were, positions were emptied, or they were realigned into other groups. Okay, this is now 2016. The only difference between today, 2016, and 2014 is that we have two more motors, giving us a total of four, and we have four additional officers. The total that we have allotted is 136. We have 113, of which five are out on on-duty injury. That gives us 108. Of that 108, that's from the chief down. 52 are in patrol. So, 24/7, you have 52 people that are watching out for this entire city. Now, we've been told time and time again by the mayor and the council majority, we had five units in 2010, we have five units today. So, what's the difference? The difference is, those five units is considered minimum staffing, minimum. Now, if you're going in to have heart surgery, and your surgeon says to you, "Oh, I have minimum qualifications." I'm not thinking you're going to want to go under anesthetic with that man. You're going to want someone who is experienced and knows what he's doing. It's the same thing in law enforcement. Our new officers are great. The ones we have are great, but they're not experienced. In two years, they're going to be fabulous if they stay. The problem with them not staying is they have nowhere to go. Our units have been diminished and absolutely vanquished. Our gang unit is literally nothing. The narcotics unit is, I don't even know if you would call it a unit. It's so small. We have no dogs, we have no Abel. We have special needs that aren't being met. The problem is, is that there is a census that if a patrol unit is not doing anything, that they're not doing anything, when in fact, when a patrol unit is just patrolling, they're doing what's called direct policing. They are being seen, they are suppressing crime. There is such a thing as crime suppression. Newport Beach has a brand-new unit, and all that unit does is focus on crime suppression. They send those units out in a black and white, so they're visible, and they know those units are out there. If there's a special area in burglary, something having to do with any other type, they send those units out, and they have been mega, mega-successful. How many of you seen a police car in your neighborhood on any regular basis? Very seldom in the east side do we see, do we see a police car, because they're actually going call to call to call. They are backed up, they are triaging calls, they are queuing calls, because they don't have the proper response or backup. These motors that used to handle all of the traffic, those reports have to go somewhere, and those reports are going to our, our officers. So, the crime suppression is, is a mega, a mega thing that we're lacking here, because I'm going to tell you about a meeting that took place in Costa Mesa in 2014. And this meeting was between parole officers and probation officers. It was about 20 to 25 experts that work in this field, along with the command staff of Costa Mesa Police Department, and they got together to talk because there was such a problem within our city. I'm going to read you a couple statements that were made by the parole officers regarding Costa Mesa. And this is, anything that I'm telling you has been obtained through either public information requests, it's off of the website, or it's official information. So, I'm reading this off a memorandum of someone who attended that meeting, and they're saying that the, generally, they place offenders in sober living homes. However, this is from a parole officer, however, depending on the commitment offense, offenders may be required to fulfill chemical dependency treatment. So, they're saying that there's a lot more of those types of offenders that are in fact coming into sober living homes. They're also, were saying that the offenders in Costa Mesa acknowledge that conducting criminal activity, especially drug sales-using activity, is more greater prevalence is, I'm sorry, more than in previous years, is perceived a lower risk of arrest because the greater prevalence of drug-related offenders in the community with no enforcement. One of the other lines that I, that really caught me and was stunning, it says, "Both the California parole and Orange County probation reported that offenders in Costa Mesa have verbalized their understanding that the Costa Mesa Police Department is understaffed, and citing police officers in the community is less frequent, and therefore, they feel safer to do their, their dirty work." This report is, is blown up, it's on one of the, I believe it's on this first, first ESOL right over here. If you have a minute, please stop by and read that report. It's an official report that was written and was received from public information. So, this isn't anything that we're, we're making up. This is unfortunately, as it, as it stands. So, the staffing, after the pink slips were withdrawn, staffing just continued to fall in the police department. And the problem with attracting candidates, be they lateral or really high-quality candidates, really became problematic. Our chief did, chief at that time was Chief Gaze, he did a, a separation report and interviewed officers that were leaving, and the officer said, "There are no places for them to go, and they're fearful, excuse me, of job security." So, we can't blame our officers, we can't blame our residents, we can't blame our police department, because they have been incredible, pulling off, protecting us in the manner they have with such limited tools. We have to give them the tools. We just can't sit back and expect them to do, to do things. So, along that line, you know, we had them out of contract for almost two years, over two years, and our fire department is still out of contract. This does not make for good recruiting practices. We have, we are a destination city. People should want to, as they always have in the past, work in our city. We have great location, we have a community that's supportive. There's been very few people that have had any angst with Costa Mesa PD, and that's why, we want more. We love our officers, we want to be fully staffed, we want to be safe. The other problem that sort of has come and, and left us in the dark is that we don't know what's going on in our city. At one time, we had a, is that up here? We had a mapping system that was an activity log online, and this log was within 15 minutes in real time. It showed the call, when they responded to it, the final adjustment on the call, if they had made an arrest, and where it occurred in the 100 block. And this was in real time, within 15 minutes. So, if any of you have been on sites like Nextdoor, you'll see people saying, "Hey, what's going on at 17th and, and Orange? What's happening here? There's a bunch of police cars." Well, if we had that system, again, as we had two years ago, we would all be much more aware of what's going on in our community and in our city as a whole. But two years ago, they took down the system in an effort to merge it with another system, and it has never returned. So, we have no way of gearing what's going on in our city. We know crime is up. Just as residents, we know that. Statistically, we saw in 2015, when the stats came out, we had a 40% increase. Incredible. Now, everybody says it's because of Prop 47 and AB 109. Well, here's my, here's my question to you. Every city in California has Prop 109, has AB 109 and Prop 47. Why were we hit even harder? It was the perfect storm. We'd had everything that left us exposed. We had influx in crime and criminals infiltrating into our city. We had the laws that were being much more lenient. We had understaffing. And what happened? We have a police department that is still undermanned, overworked. I say we are understaffed and overcrimed. I ask for certain documents to say, "How badly overcrimed are we?" The staffing, even in the regards to NICSIL alerts and whatnot, the police does, they don't have that. We don't have the tools to give them. We have an incredible chief who is driving this department, and with all his might is trying to rebuild it. So, we are going to get there. When? I don't know. Mayor Mensinger said six to nine months. Our chief several months ago said, "We will not obtain our June 2017," because they come and they go. We have one that left, I believe, last week or the week before. We just can't seem to pick up or get enough good candidates to even out the path of what's happening, what's happening in our city. So, if you'll take a look at this chart, I think you'll see it up close and personal what, what has happened. There's so much, you've got to be aware of what's going on in your neighborhood. I think in your, in your bags, Chief Sharpness gave a, a 10-point of some things to do that you can help. You know, lock your doors, don't leave any valuables in your cars, just simple things, watch out for your neighbors, be aware. You know, this isn't 1950 anymore. I mean, this, you know, someone called us Costa Mayberry. And we're not Costa Mayberry anymore, no more. And when you read these reports from the parole officers and see what's going on, and you see the effect of the sober living homes spilling over into our crime, and on the logs... logs, I poured through these logs, which are actually, the only way you can see anything is to go inside the police department and they keep a log for approximately two to four weeks. And you can look at it, but you're not supposed to copy it. Somehow this got in the way of my iPad. I don't know. But here, but here's what I go. I went through all of this, case by case by case by case. And probably 50 to 70% of these incidences are related to alcohol and drugs. Because now heroin is a simple possession. Cocaine is a simple possession. That means that it's really, in some cases, they'll be on the street before the officer's done writing his report. In Prop 47, one of the judges in North Court gives a very good lecture on what's happening in the criminal system. They had over 3,000 hearings that they were hearing on reevaluating Prop 47 for people to have, to be released and to have their charges reduced. And Orange County had one of the largest numbers of the Prop 47 releases because we're in Ice County. Consider this for Costa Mesa and remember this. We are 3% of the total population of the county, 3%. Yet we have 27% of the sober living homes in the entire county. We have 63% of our homes are rentals. We have staffing in our police department that is seriously diminished. We have a majority council that has made it very clear that they're anti-public safety. So I'm going to leave you with this. I have a lot more to say, but I'm going to leave you with this. Because we have great question-and-answer panel. We have Lieutenant Clay Epperson, who was lieutenant in Special Investigation Units. And that are, those are the units that got hit the hardest and he'll be able to give you some information on that. But I want to leave this with you. The public safety has not endorsed Steve Mencinger. Public safety has not endorsed Lee Ramos. Public safety has not endorsed Alan Monsour. To me, to me, as a voter, that screams volumes. So we need to get out and save our city. We're all residents. This is our city. It's our community. You're my neighbors. We all live in East Side, West Side. There's no East Side, West Side Mesa Verde. We are Costa Mesa. It deserves all of our input. If it's volunteering at a school, do it. If you can walk a flyer, do it. I don't care who you walk for. Don't do Trump though, please. But get out there and do what you need to do. Robin's shutting me up. She knows that's not going to help. But do something for the city that's positive. Because you know what? I've been here 44 years. I love this city. And I think we all do. That's why we live here. So I bid you adieu and a safe return home. Thank you.
Okay, for questions regarding the fire department, we have Fire Deputy Chief Fred Saguin. Fred recently retired as deputy chief after serving 30 years with the Costa Mesa Fire Department. His firefighter helmet, which has a leather patch that displays his title, held the following titles: acting chief, deputy chief, battalion chief, fire marshal, and EMS coordinator. This oversized patch piled the titles high, earning him the nickname "The Pope." For questions regarding the sober living industry, we have Robert Mann, the chairman of the Orange County Sober Living Coalition, as well as the Public Relations Director for Clean Path Recovery. And finally, for questions regarding the Costa Mesa Police Department, we have Lieutenant Clay Epperson, retired after serving Costa Mesa for 30 years. His tour with the CNPD included supervising the special enforcement detail and he was key in ridding the city of the white supremacist gangs. All right. So please pass those questions over to the hosts. They'll be collecting them. I'll be reading them and we'll get some answers.
Do you mind reading the cards?
All right. I have some. And I have one right here, off the top, for the police department. Thank you. "If we have the same number of cars on duty as in 2011, how come response time is slow?"
The volume of calls is way up for a variety of reasons. But I think the most important thing that you should understand is that if you went back to 2008, we had a department that had a substantial patrol force that could handle calls for service. And then we had a substantial, like 1/3 of the department was engaged in proactive activities, going after criminals every day, that we would proactively go out and look for the parolees, the probationers, the sex offenders, the people selling drugs on the street and do something about it. That is gone. All we essentially have now are officers out there handling calls for service and a very small detective bureau. So we've gone entirely from proactive, or virtually entirely proactive, to completely reactive. And there's a term for it. We're chasing the radio. The guys out there on the street are chasing the radio, trying to catch up with the calls they have. And so when they come to you and you've got a problem and that vagrant person lit a fire in your backyard or something, you want something done about it, that officer's burned out, he's tired, he's overworked, he's worked, the last four days, he's worked mandatory overtime, he knows there's six calls waiting for him, and he's not going to want to arrest this guy and do something because he wants to get on to the next calls and you're going to be unhappy with the service. That's because of the situation that's been created by the council majority. There was one, she, Mary failed to mention, we went two years where the council majority failed to hire anybody. They disallowed hiring anybody. Police hiring, you need, we need to be planning today for the hiring, for the staffing we want to be at five years from now and go aggressively after that. We're five years behind. They're running right now, because the council majority created this hiring crisis, we're running to catch up, but we can't. We're behind the curve and they've created an environment in the police department, we cannot retain employees. We are a training ground. We're going to spend a quarter million dollars to train an officer and he's going to look at what's going on, how the council is, he's going to bail out. When we change the council, I think you'll see retention rates go up.
Thank you. Next question is for fire. "What types of shifts compromise a 56-hour work week? And why is there a churn keeping employees?"
Okay. The fire departments in California and mostly across the US, we work a 56 work week. It doesn't equate to our true work schedule. We work 24-hour shifts. We have three shifts, A, B, and C, we call them. So each one works 25 hours a day. During our schedule, we do what's called a threes and fours. We do three of those. So ideally, it's if you work Monday, Wednesday, Friday, so you'll be off Tuesday, off Thursday, and then you get Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday off. That's where your four days come into play. So for that question there, yeah, that's how we do it. Three shifts, 24-hour day, but it averages out to 56 hours a work week. And the second question?
Oh.
Follow-up, sorry.
Yep, no, no. Let's see, the follow-up is the, "Why is there churn keeping employees?"
It's challenging right now. When I came on, like Mary had in her presentation, Frank always touched upon, City Costa Mesa was a destination department. Over the time and years, right after the downfall of the economy, things changed here and it started to become not quite a destination department. We are now known as a training department. Guys are getting their foot in the door. They're coming here and like the police, once they have a name for themselves, they're going, reaching out and going to other venues. Bigger, better, can't answer that way or the other. So right now, guys are looking more at families and stuff like that. And that's the true fact.
Thank you. Sober living, we have a question. Yeah, thank you, absolutely. "Why can't sober living provide transport back home if they drop out?"
Okay. First off, I'd like to thank Mary Theresa and the Costa Masons for responsible government for hosting tonight's meeting. Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak and attend a panel. It's rare that we have that and I want to thank you all for that as well. Secondly, if you're not aware, September is National Recovery Month. So if we could, just briefly, take a timeout for a few seconds and honor and think about those still suffering from alcohol and drug abuse. Thank you. I'd like to also thank two prominent members of the recovery community that are here tonight. That is Grant McNiff and Dr. Honey Tames. And together, they represent over 50 years. That's half a century of recovery in Costa Mesa. So please give them a hand. Now, thirdly, to address that question, thank you. You know, most of us, and my facility included, which is Clean Path Recovery, we don't send our clients out in the street if they choose to leave. We place them into other facilities and we help them get back home to their destinations. So I can't answer for everyone, but I can answer for those that do take the work. And I know that Yellowstone and other good providers also tend to refer those clients to other facilities to assist them and continue on with their treatment. Thank you.
Thank you. This is for both fire and police. "How many bodies due to drug and alcohol does the Costa Mesa Fire Department, police handle, as in how many compared to surrounding cities?"
I don't know that we can actually compress that into numbers. I'll tell you that probably 95, 98% of all calls are drug and alcohol-related in some capacity. Probably even more, more so now, given the amount of homeless people we have who have drug problems in the, in the city. And then statistically, the one number I can give you going back to my time, Costa Mesa, for whatever reason, has had one of the highest ratios of parolees. So people coming out of state prison come here. The only city that actually had a higher ratio, the last time I personally checked it, was Santa Ana. So we have been unfortunately a magnet for some of that population.
Yeah, exactly. And I can't answer for the adjoining cities, but some reason, this area town is a hub, closer to the beach maybe. But somehow, there's an attraction for what's down here. Just like Clay said, probably 89% of them are right there. If they're on them, we're touching them also. So it's kind of hard to tell without those numbers, but.
Thanks, Fred. Stay up there for a second. So 4th of July in Costa Mesa is completely out of control. Four days of setting off fireworks and not enough police. To handle all the illegal fireworks, what would you do to recommend, or what do you recommend we do to not get this, to get this back under control?
You know, that's a tough question because, and I say it's a loaded question because there's a lot of good things from the fire, firework booths. A lot of these clubs, organizations, that's their way of getting some money is because, you know, not just the cities are cut, schools have been cut and everybody. So everybody's looking for something to gather funds. The hard part is, you can't capture the illegal stuff. It comes in in truckloads daily, is that's the big hub, when they come down there because they try to hide it when you're doing some of the legal fireworks. But even the cities that have illegal, don't allow fireworks at all, have just about the same problem. It's just ours is Magna Food because of both legal and illegal. So that's a tough one to do. I don't think you'll ever get into it because just like I said, the two, it's a double-edged sword. You don't want to take away from schools and organizations trying to get their share for that little bit of money they do get and.
Great. One more, Fred.
On that subject. Okay. How many arrests did you make last July 4?
How many arrests were made last July 4?
People setting the mark. How many arrests were made?
That I'd have to refer to the PD because I'm not sure exactly.
Do you have any idea?
No, I don't.
More than one? Less than 10? The police guy? I don't care. Whoever it is.
All right. All right. We're going to keep going here.
That was a non-answer.
We don't have that information, sir. All right, we're going to continue on. So I do have one more, Fred, for you.
Yeah.
So what does the amount of overtime affect the firefighters' home life and their health?
It takes a toll on it. It truly does. When you picture someone that's working 1,000, 1,500 hours a year, our normal work schedule, like we said, was 24-hour shifts. That equates to 10 days a month, 240 hours. Majority of those guys are working about five to seven more 24-hour shifts. So most of our life is spent here. If you look at some of our guys retiring, they've been put on 30 years, they will have put on close to 18 years here in the city and the other balance at home. So it takes a toll on everything.
Wow.
And you've got to understand, there's the wife at home, she's doing the man's work. She's trying to handle the water lease, getting the kids to school, getting the kids to sports and all that. So it takes it on both ends, not only on the gentleman himself, but the family and the female.
Thank you, Fred. Question for sober living. "So what is the percentage of people in sober living homes that are there due to court order as opposed to volunteer?"
If I may? I think this might expedite the process as well if we take it over here. You know, again, you're, you're asking me a question that would require a statistic of research of all of the, you know, sober living treatment centers and residences in the city of Costa Mesa. I apologize, I can't provide you that great statistic, but we do cooperate with law enforcement. We do participate in the AB 109 and STOP programs to help those early offenders straighten out their lives, find recovery, and become and acclimate back into society.
Robert, I have another question. So don't they, the city, have to ask the homeowner in the neighborhood before they
Please rephrase that. You're asking me if, say, someone wants to open up a sober living facility, do they have to acknowledge that to the property owner, the person they're running the property from?
Or in the neighborhood even?
Well, I would, I would hope so. That's a good practice. You know, I, I know that Clean Path has maintained a high level of transparency with city government. We've always welcomed any code enforcement or city official to come in and tour our facility. However, you know, I just don't, again, most providers, and myself included, if I was to rent a house, I would do it transparently. If I was to lease it, I would of course have the property owner involved in the CUP process for the city of Costa Mesa. There has to be actually sign-off from the property owner when you're going through those permitting processes.
Okay, this is for fire. Turning the fire department over to the county was proposed by the city of Santa Ana and they did this. So how does it work for us and could it still work for us?
The city did, we, the city and the fire association agreed to reach out to the Orange County Fire Authority and do a comprehensive RFP, report for proposal. And when it came back, the council determined that that was not the direction they wanted to go. And pretty much that, in my eyes, would be determined as a dead issue.
Thank you.
So for us to go forward would be another RFP that has to be brought forward to Orange County Fire to tackle it. And just one question, just to try to answer your question for you. I can't answer how many people we arrested last year. Usually, they're just sites. But I can tell you that the teams that we used to send out three, four years ago, groups of two, we sent a lot more of our investigators out, but because of overtime costs and budgetary costs, we were not allowed to do that. So that kind of restricted us from hitting our target areas. Yes, we still went out there, but a lot of those are just sites. They're not arrests unless it's big drug, or, excuse me, fireworks bus.
Thank you. By the way, I think I've noticed our councilperson, Katrina Foley, in the house. And I believe sanitary board members Art Perry and Jim Ferryman are here as well. So this question's for the police. Are we contracting helicopter? And if so, with whom? And can you talk about car break-ins?
Yeah. We are contracting with Huntington. It's expensive. And what you should understand more importantly is that we had the best aviation program going. We shared it with Newport and we contracted with Santa Ana, so that helped spread the costs around. It was the best air support program going out there and it was extremely efficient. Let me tell you, when, when I was a patrol sergeant, when something was going on, a pursuit, a burglary in progress, a crime in progress, some kind of scene, you wanted that air cover there immediately. The helicopter is a force multiplier. You can do with the helicopter what would take you eight men on the ground to do. And it's a tragedy that we lost that. That alone had a significant increase in crime. Criminals don't feel as... That alone had a significant increase in crime, that criminals don't feel as, that they're out in the open as much as they would be with the helicopter.
Thank you.
What was the other question? Vehicle burglaries?
Yes.
Vehicle burglaries, one of the top crime problems, vehicle-related crime, vehicle burglaries, and auto theft. And you just, you have to call on every suspicious activity you see, when somebody's cruising the cars in the street, or looking in windows. Don't leave anything in your car visible, don't leave coins in your ashtray. A strung addict will smash the window out of your car just to get those two quarters out of your ashtray. And certainly don't leave anything valuable visible, and report any crime that occurs so that we can get on it and start doing something about it. But it's a very difficult, intractable problem, that we put a lot of, when we had resources, we put a lot of resources into that.
Thank you. This question is for Fred. Why not transport ALS?
Why not transport ALS? Obviously, by the presentation, we were for the, that part of it. There's different avenues you look like, but definitely ALS transportation does give you the cost recovery aspect side of things to put back into your system, your EMS system, or the vehicle replacement, however you choose to deem. It does allow a quicker chance, if you need to do what we call scoop and runs, the unit's there, we take off and go, and deal with the patient along the way. So it is definitely a bonus, but as we know right now, it's not on the radar.
Another question for you. If a member of the fire service is forced to work overtime, on an overtime shift, what does that mean, and can members of the fire service ever say no to overtime?
Being forced, yes. Our members are nowadays, for the last five years, we are being forced more frequently everywhere. If I can put in perspective, back when I was a fireman, I got forced maybe once out of the year. Our guys right now are being forced 300 hours, so you'll get 24 hours versus 300 hours. So that is quite common right now, just because of the amount of open positions and amount they are working. Chances of him turning down are next to nil unless he has a real good reason. If you, at this day and age with childcare, it does put a pinch on family life, and if he can find someone to work him, he can turn it down, let someone else work it for him.
Thank you. This question's for police. We had a break-in, but nothing was taken. The responding officer filed an incident, but not a report. Are incidents included in the neighborhood statistics used to make decisions?
That's kind of hard for me to answer, because I'm not sure what they're referring, if he just did a computer notation, that if you, if there was a break-in, there should have been a burglary report taken, if you could prove that there was intent to commit a theft or some other crime. However, when you have overworked cops with 10 calls waiting on their screen in their car, they're going to cut quarters. It happens all the time. I look on the webpage next door, and I see citizens complaining about the low-quality service they get from the PD. It's because the guys are overworked, too many calls, too much thrown at them, not enough resources. Sorry.
Very good, thank you. This question's for, let's actually, keep the microphone. So why don't, actually, you know, let's go to sober living, for fairness, we'll spread it around a little bit. So why don't sober living homes, state residents, have they been asked to, back to their home city-state? Oh, who have been asked, been back to their home city-state?
Actually, I believe that's a rephrasing of the first question you asked me.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right on that one. Here, I have another sober living question, since you have the mic. Why does Costa Mesa have so many sober living residents? Does the city council get money to allow them?
Well, of course, you know, the city municipality is its own entity, they do not receive any monies, nor is there any type of exchange between sober living facilities, treatment centers in the city of Costa Mesa. And I'm sorry, would you repeat that question again?
Well, do we have any kind of ordinance? How come there are so many residents, and is there an ordinance here in the city for sober living?
Well, you know, as far as the number, there are quite a few sober living residences throughout the state of California, throughout the country itself. You know, as it was mentioned earlier, Costa Mesa is a destination. Southern California is a destination. People come to California for many different reasons, our acclimate climate, our beauty, you know, there are so many, and of course, availability of services. So Costa Mesa itself should and can position itself to be a jewel of recovery in the state of California. We can set the standard and work together to assist other counties, other municipalities in working and forming relationships with those people who perform recovery services.
Okay, this is back to Clay. With diminished police department staffing, what impact will marijuana initiative have, if passed, on the police department?
I think none. I mean, I think, I think everybody that's using already is, they already have their, their prescription, and wasting any more time enforcement of marijuana laws, I think, is absolutely ridiculous. That's my personal opinion.
That's great. Do you also think that the excessive use of service ordinance that penalizes motels for calling for help makes our city safer?
I think that's absurd, that you would punish them for calling when there's problems, use that against them, that's a problem. I think the fact that one hotel is suing the city already for the way enforcement was done is a big mistake. You have to enforce uniformly, and let me tell you, there's prostitution in all the hotels. You can go to the best hotels, there's prostitution, there's drug use, there's people under the influence, they just look better and they have more money. And that's a fact of life. The hotels that they've, that they've picked on to run out of business actually have the least amount of prostitution, because they're so low-end that even the prostitutes don't want to go there. Honestly, the, they, there's, they go to a better-class motel to operate their business. And let's say you take the motel off the, so let's get rid of all the motels off a harbor, they're going to work out of apartment buildings. They're online, and, you know, to put as much effort into this as they are when we have all these other problems, in my mind, is absurd. Let's go out to the human trafficking. Let's go out to the human trafficking. We have a ton of massage parlors that are just fronts for prostitution. There's a huge demand for these services, but there's a significant problem with human trafficking that just goes completely under the radar.
Thank you. So this question's for Fire. Why did we close Station 6, or what were we proposing to close Station 6?
Back right after the, the economy took, started going the tank, we brought in interim chief Arnold, was brought in to look at the department and see where we could cut. We had to cut positions somewhere. Station 6, at the time, was our station that had the lowest incident numbers, per se, and it doesn't sound like, you know, they were averaging, I think, 700, 800 calls a year, doesn't sound like a lot, probably average of two a day. But it's not just that you look at, you had, we had to look at the area itself, and at the time, the area itself was not thriving and starting to build up. As we look now, looking forward, that station, it's still open because of a reason. It's busy up there now, that station is busier, the station's utilized just as much as it was before. That apparatus is actually, not only does the building inspections, prevention programs, what have you, but it's also the unit that backfills in our city. Five years ago, when we were looking at the plan, city of Santa Ana was in existence, they had two units out of that station. And as we all know, it's now operated by the Orange County Fire Authority, they even reduced that unit down to one. So all of our cities, all touching us, are all going up in calls, and we're all trying to find that happy medium, however we can deliver service. At the time, we thought we could, the question or the thought was, the comments also were that, oh, we can just rely on outside agencies coming in. But as we look forward now, we can't. Each one of us, as, prior to my retirement, we were all looking at each other going, hey, why are you using our units so much? And we're all trying to figure out how we are going to try to balance this out. So like I said, at the time, that station, out of our five, five to six fire stations, that was the one that had the little bit lower run production. But now, now it's up there, and now we obviously know that station, that whole area is building, thriving, apartments are going up. The area, the whole city, we know, can't go out anymore, so now we're going up. So now it's just posing a new problem, is how we're going to keep our delivery of service up. And our response levels, we try to get to all of our EMS calls within five minutes, and it becomes challenging, like the officer said, even for the officer's side of things, traffic and everything coming into play adds to it. You take that station out of the equation, it's going to add a little bit to response times, even with the signal preemption in effect.
Thank you. About five more minutes of questions from you guys, so I can keep you for that long. Sober living question. How many people are dying from drugs and alcohol in America, and isn't there a heroin epidemic as well?
Yes, and quite a large number. I can tell you at this moment in time, right now, just in the county of Orange, there are 300,000 individuals that are suffering from a diagnosable and treatable disease known as addiction. And I'd like to take a quick moment as well to advise everyone that the Orange County Sober Living Coalition currently has 40 members. We provide information, training, and technical assistance, advocacy, and quality. We have developed and the promotion of quality assurance standards for sober living homes. We also have standards of, set of house rules that have to be maintained, good neighbor policies that have to be maintained, and a part of these rules, and part of living in a sober living house is, you need to maintain sobriety at all times, you need to contribute to the house by completing chores that are assigned, you have to keep a job or go to school, you have to cooperate with any type of curfews, participate in a 12-step program or other support groups, attend regularly scheduled house meetings, and these are just those people living in the house. These aren't combination of houses or large numbers of individuals, and keep the house free of all substance of abuse.
Yeah, I'm going to, so I have a follow-up on that. Are clients in the sober living homes tested weekly for outside drugs?
Most clients, and our clients are tested three times a week.
Thank you. All right, we're going to do one more question.
One more.
One more, last one. So for Fire, can we change the, I'm not sure what this is, for a bond to report the Fire Department due to the large volume and new residences?
Levels?
Man, I'm not sure.
Can we change the?
All right, I have a different one. Do firefighters?
Wait a minute, maybe the words in series.
The author?
It's can we change the, and we can't read the word, for a level, for a bond to report the Fire Department due to the huge volume and new, we can't, and you got a couple words. Is this belong to somebody here?
Yes, go ahead.
Why don't we charge the developers to post a bond? I mean, they're developing so much, the density level, why can't the developers put up the bond money?
Why can't the developers put up the bond money?
For the Fire Department.
For the Fire Department.
You know, I can't answer that question. I don't know. I'm not, I can't answer that question. I really don't know what the answer would be.
Okay, so that's all the time we have for tonight, folks. I'm always inspired by being around all of you dedicated neighbors who care about our city of Costa Mesa. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and be sure to vote in November, on November 8.
We're ready for the wrap-off.
Our first basket is sponsored by Costa Mesa stuff, a cup holder, a t-shirt, a trucker hat, American flag, and sunglasses.
And the last three numbers are 806. 80, ah, come on in, Fostal. Local girl. Okay.
I will tell you what the next. Second prize of the night is coffee from Starbucks. Sorry, no gift card.
I love Carl. And the last three numbers are 996. 99, yay, come on down. Winner, winner, chicken dinner. Oh, no.
No, coffee dinner.
Coffee dinner.
Okay, our last one.
Whoa, that looks like a Halloween one. Oh, Cindy wants that one.
Go play fair, Cindy.
It's a Halloween one, and the last three numbers are 800.
800.
No one here?
Ah, if they're not here, wait a minute, they're looking in the bag. 800 not here? Okay, we're going to pull another one.
You got another chance.
The last three numbers are 747. Do you have closing statements, or shall I just close? Okay, thank you, everyone, we're done. We're done. Carl? I just want to say something here.
I have a announcement to make. Seeing for our chi are, are, are having teasers, but Mr. Tommy, can please stand up and show everyone all the teasers we're ordering?
You can order those from the Egan's if you want, it's their own private enterprise. I want to thank you all for coming, please, please mingle and talk to the candidates, see the various displays. Wow, I got educated tonight. This was great. Thank you.